Everything up.
You're all set.
All right, this made my screen go.
Go away.
Shift, I got, I got too big. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. This meeting has, will be conducted virtually. All board members, staff, and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identified in the public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or by pressing star nine if participating by telephone to indicate that you'd like to be recognized to speak. Meeting and application documents have been made available at the township, on the township's website through civil civic clerk portal in accordance with the public meeting notice. Applicants will be presented remotely and will identify themselves before testifying. And with that, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to public law 2020, comma, C dash 11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to the local finance notices established in the state of New Jersey. With that, may I have a roll call of both board members and board and township professionals, please?
Mr. Santa Romita is absent. Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Pizin?
Present.
Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Kinsler?
Here.
Mr. Maske?
Here.
Mr. De Sessa?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
There we go. Thank you. First up is consideration of meeting minutes. We do have the meeting minutes of May 6th, 2021. I have a motion to approve.
You have the list, Michael?
I do. Available to vote is Mr. Chicorelli, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Pizin, Mr. Scobbo, Mr. Hashtag, Mayor Lepani, Vice Chair Julian, and Chair Sarachi.
And Mr. Emick.
So I'll make no motion to approve, Hashtag.
Thank you.
I'll second. Chicorelli.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Okay, here an unroll call, please?
I just need to double check, because I think the list the board gave me did not include. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think Kurt's eligible, so Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pizin?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And we do not have any resolutions for consideration, nor do we have any planning board miss, business. So I will now open up to business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to address the board on matters not on this evening's agenda, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine if you're telephone.
I see none.
See none, we're moving on. Don't have considerations of ordinances this evening, so we're going to go to our application of, for this evening. JS Masonry LLC, file 20-PV-14-MSPV. Block 142, Lot 20, commonly known as 15 Park Avenue. The applicant this evening is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval. Seebulk variances and waivers construct a 1,200 square foot off, or combination office warehouse with enhancements to the parking lot and associated improvements on the property in the I-1 light industrial zone and within the ASD or otherwise known as the Architectural Site Design Overlay District. And I believe I will now turn it over to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Singer.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. As just stated, we are here tonight on our client JS Masonry pertaining to property located 15 Park Avenue in Hillsborough. The applicant, you'll hear testimony tonight on behalf of the applicant explaining the project, which includes the construction of a 1,200 square foot office, special warehouse for storage of masonry supplies, which is consistent with the industrial use in the zone, together with the requisite paved area and parking spaces. You'll hear testimony regarding the minimal impact of the project on the surrounding area, given the nature of the business. Testimony will also be presented from the applicant's engineer and architect regarding the requested sea variances, waivers, and general design of the building. We would like to start this evening with swearing in our clients from JS Masonry, so they can explain a little bit about their business and how the facility will operate.
So I saw on the agenda, Mr. Singer, that there's an interpreter?
Yes.
I also see there's three gentlemen in Joseph Sikowski's window.
One is Joseph, one is Mattis, and one is the interpreter, Ralph.
All right, great. So what I'll do is I'll swear on the interpreter, and then I'll swear in, I guess, Joseph and Matt Sikowski. All right, so is Mr. Ralph Braz, Brazna there?
Yes, present.
All right, Ralph, if you could, I think it's Ralph, right? That's what everyone was saying.
That's fine, yeah.
And it's R-A-F-A-L-B-R-O-Z-Y-N-A?
Yes.
And what language will you be interpreting?
Slovakian.
All right, do you swear that any interpretation you give tonight from Slovakian into English and English into Slovakian is going to be the best of your ability?
I do.
All right, and then if you can ask Mr. and Mr. Sikowski to raise the right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear any testimony that you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I know.
I know.
All right, thank you. And just Ralph, if you could just identify whoever's speaking for me, just because I don't know who's who. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Start with going through Madison and Joseph, what your positions are with JS Masonry. Mattis, why don't we start with you?
Okay, I'm the foreman of the J. Mason. I'm Josephson.
And Joseph?
I'm just an owner.
Okay. Mattis, can you, Mattis, can you explain the nature of the business?
We do masonry jobs, like with stone jobs. We do privately residential, commercial.
And can you give a brief description of how the facility will operate, in terms of times a day, employees, shifts?
It's dependent the weather, you know, summertime, seven to five, wintertime, eight to three, all but.
How many employees will you have?
Two, five employees, three to five, four, not be, not many.
And how will the masonry materials be stored?
We, we, we store masonry material on the jobs, so we just need like, you know, the trucks and couple, some tools, tools is inside the garage.
Will the materials be stored in the building?
Yep.
And how many vehicles will, will be on site?
Three to four.
And do you expect customers or visitors to come to the site?
No.
Are there any questions for the business owners? Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, I was just making sure everyone was chiming in if they wanted to.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, I just have a question. This is Ken. Is the, is the site operable now? Like, is this just a continuation of the business? You're just looking for it to build something to store materials in?
The site is not built yet.
Okay, so business isn't being done there currently?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you.
There's no build, there's no building that's part of the architectural plans and everything we're going for tonight, the, the site plan approvals.
Tag, I might, Mr. Singer, there is something going on on the site. It's not a vacant lot, correct? There are some on there and a shed and a fence.
Right, fence, correct. It does not the gen, the building for the operation.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Um. And the question.
So what is currently on the site?
Um. Mattis, are you able to?
I, I do, I do parking there, the trailer and one my truck. And then I have a, some scaffolding on, under the shed.
Yeah, and the only reason I was asking was, uh, I mean, I saw it when I drove by and took a look. So I was just wondering if there's going to be any best difference in traffic going in or out in the future compared to now? If it was existing already, if something was going on there now?
Yeah, the, the, the operational building is not there yet. And I, any additional would be, would be minimal, as they're saying, talking about maybe three people at the site.
Right, the building's not there yet, but is there any operation there now? That's what I was.
Not, not in terms of, of a full masonry operation. No, he stores, I think he said he stores, he has a trailer there and something under the shed, so it's not really an operational business.
Okay.
Any other questions for these witnesses?
Eric, should I open it up to the public or?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, you may.
Thank you. So may I have a motion open to public? So moved, Wagner? Second. Thank you, Mr. Scobbo. All in favor?
I.
I, I, okay, if anyone in the the public lobby, lobby, I can call a library lobby. If anyone would like to question the witnesses, the owners, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine. Okay.
Same as.
Any right now, so. May proceed to your next witness.
Thank you. Like to call Dan Fortunato, our architect.
Hi, Dan, I'll just swear you in, okay?
Okay.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you just state and spell your name?
Dan Fortunato.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Dan, can you tell the board what your educational background is?
Yes, I have a bachelor's in architecture for Drexel University and a bachelor's of science industrial design from Ohio State University.
Thank you. And what licenses do you currently hold?
New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania.
And you've testified before this board before, correct?
Yes, I have.
Would, I'd like the board to accept Dan as an expert in architecture?
Anyone on the board take exception? Don't see any, so we accept, may proceed.
Thank you. Um. Dan, I'd like to call your attention to the memo from David Maske dated May 21st, 2021. And specifically, let's start on page two regarding the parking access and loading. Can you explain to the board how that interacts with the ASDO standard?
Parking itself, we, uh.
I think he's going in and out, Mr. Singer.
I, yes.
I lost his video a little bit, and now it's audio is in and out.
Yeah, please stand by.
Any better? Any better if I talk slower?
He froze for a minute, Dan, so.
You froze for a minute, yeah, go ahead and try again, Mr. Fortunato.
Hey, when I met with the owners, I tried to.
Locked up again.
I know there is a massive storm over Hillsborough, Montgomery, where he is.
Mr. Fortunato, maybe you could try to shut your video off and see if that's any better? Maybe at least we could hear you?
Uh, I don't know if it's going to be any better, but I'll keep talking.
Okay, we can hear you now, so go ahead.
Okay, so the, the requirements the owner testified earlier that they will not have any off street.
I guess that answers our question.
All right, can you hear me?
Now you broke, you, you froze again, Mr. Fortunato.
Uh, I don't, I could probably phone this in. Might be a way I could do this.
If you want to, if you want to try to dial in using our thing, and you want to give me your, you know, I'll see you pop in, I can promote you at that point. If we want to try that, Mr. Singer, if, if you want to maybe move on to a different witness, I don't know what the chairman would like to do.
Definitely, yeah, Mr. Fortunato, if you could dial in. And I'll leave it up to, I'm a singer, if you want to move to another witness, or do you want to maintain the same, this current order?
Um, I think he's dialing in now, so if you don't mind, if you could give him a minute to dial in.
Okay.
Well, we did talk about it, right, Mr. Singer? It happens. It's, it's bad here right now, so. I know you're in town with me, so.
Well, it has to happen on our last meeting before we go public, so.
Don't we have a meeting next week?
Oh, yeah, we got one more.
I think we have one or at least one more, right?
Yeah, but it'll take us all five minutes.
Well, we'll see.
Is that the last one, or is there a third one in this month?
Get through it, then.
No, I think the next week's the last one.
It's a business meeting, but there's nothing on it.
Okay.
Do you, do you see his cell phone in yet?
I do not see it in yet. I still see the two that were on prior.
See him still on screens.
Yeah, well, he, he could stay on the screen and call in. It'll be too separate.
He just dropped.
Okay, I, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but the, the passcode is requ, is a combination of numbers and letters.
There, there.
It's only allowing me to do numbers only.
Yeah, Mr. Fortunato, on the bottom of that, there should be a separate passcode. Let me see if I can get, I can give you the passcode. The numeric, the numeric passcode is five, seven, six, five, six, five.
I see someone just popped on, Sandy Fresco, I don't know.
Yes, I saw that too, Chairman. I assume that's not him.
It's coincidence.
Yeah, right. Well, I'll let the board know I will not be here next week. Jim will be covering, so I guess this will be my last one of these. I know you're all very disappointed.
That is, you know.
Then it's, it's, it's good that you had to deal with the difficulty here, just on the way up. For the last one.
Yeah, well, you know, out of all, oh, there we go. There's a number. Let me put him in. All right, Mr. Fortunato, if you unmute yourself, I think it's star six on the phone. I'm assuming that's you.
Okay.
There you are.
Okay, all right, so. Let me try again.
Yeah, just, Mr. Fortunato, just mute your computer. Or turn your mic off on the computer. Otherwise, we'll have an echo. Okay, go ahead now. You should be good.
Any better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, starting over. So with the parking. Essentially, when I met with the owners, they testified earlier that they do not have any off-street or off-the-street customers, clients. This is strictly going to be used for a warehouse facility for them to use. So what we did is we came up with the occupant requirement, and then we had three parking spaces essentially for their workers, and of course, one handicap spot. So that's how we came up with the four, look, four spots that are on the plan now, parking spots.
Um. The, uh. So specifically, the, the, the two spaces that are going to be proposed in the front yard, that's where they needed to go, Dan?
Well, I, I have two in the front and two in the rear. The two in the front are just more for convenience, but we have essentially the two in the rear that'll be for them, for their workers, whoever comes in to work for the day, they'll switch out trucks, and then they'll, they'll go on their way, and then it's really just for them to park their vehicles while they work. They grab their work trucks.
On page three of the same memo, the May 21st, 2021 memo. Paragraph seven. Discuss the, talks about the signage. And Mr. Maske makes a couple of comments regarding signage and the requirement for waivers. If you could, please advise the board as to the 25 square foot sign and whether it can be conformed and/or if a waiver will indeed need to be requested. And then also discuss the waiver for the 12-foot signs.
Well, I did see the comment regarding the 10% requirement, and I can, I can reduce that to 24 square feet. That won't be a problem. So I can, I can make that work. As far as the 12 square foot's the number, that just more is just architectural feature, to be honest with you, that could come off the building. That wasn't really anything more than just something architecturally interesting. But they certainly can put a number on the building that conforms to the requirements.
So we would not need any, we would not need sign waivers? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
It will conform to the, to the requirements. In terms of the sign design, lighting, colors, and material, they will also conform?
Yeah, I don't know what the logo is. We didn't get into it that much with the owner or color schemes. But whatever it is, yes, we'll have to make it work with the requirements.
On page four.
And this page is more of a placeholder for anything else.
Okay. On, on page four of the memo, specifically paragraph 11. Can you explain compliance with the Architectural Site Design Overlay District?
Yes, we'll start with the roofs, and the roof pitch here, they require a minimum of a nine-on-12. I have a 12-on-12, so I'm definitely over what they need, which is allowed. So to get more height in the building, I went with a 12-on-12 roof pitch. Regarding the roof materials, right now, it just plans to be dimensional asphalt, dimensioned asphalt, I should say. It's three-dimensional asphalt shingles, nothing really more than that. So that was item two, and then item two B refers to color schemes, and again, we didn't quite get into colors yet, but we will certainly get into that, and earth tones is certainly what I would prefer anyway. So we'll stick with that requirement for sure on the roof materials and color. As far as the next section, which is the facade treatments, it indicates here about different materials that can be used. Again, right now, the intent is to have a split-face masonry bottom. Now, it does say that you can't use CMU here, but it's not really what we're doing. We're not doing painted cinder block. This is going to be a split-face block finished material. And then on top of it, we'll probably just go with a siding, be it hardy or vinyl siding. I haven't made that decision yet. As far as item eight is concerned, there was brick colors. Again, brick doesn't really apply here, but if it does go stone, again, it will be definitely an earth tone feel to the house, to the building. And then as far as item nine, again, we're back to the exposed cinder block, which again, we're not going to have. It's going to be a split-face masonry product in the earth tone family. Item 10 was wood surfaces, which we don't have any, so that wouldn't really apply. And then it jumps to item 13, which is the windows, and again, they will be vinyl clad, thermally efficient windows on the, on the building. Again, colors, we didn't get into colors, but we certainly will stick with the requirements they have here.
Thank you, Dan. In terms of, I want to draw your attention to the memo from Panone dated May 27th, 2021. Yes, specifically with regard to paragraph eight. The, in fact, it is, although the site plans call it a, a loading dock, it's not. Please explain to the board that, that what it really is, it actually is what's on the architectural, which is a garage door.
Yes, essentially, that's what it is. Again, when I did meet with the owner, they did not specify that they would have large tractor trailers or anything of the sort delivering to the job site. It's basically going to be box trucks and vans. So essentially, this is for them to load up their vehicles with whatever materials they need and, and be on their way. It's not, again, intended to have any large trucks come into that site.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions for this witness?
Mr. Singer, this is Fred Kinzer IT. If you want me to show any of the documents that were sent to civic clerk and share the screen, just let me know unless one of you guys want to do it. I can do that as well. I have them up and ready.
Sure. I think when when Mr. Nusser starts, we're going to, we'll put up the, the site plan so we could, so we could go.
Okay, yeah, just let me know if he wants to share or wants me to do it. That's fine. Sorry, sorry, Carl, you can continue if anybody has any questions.
No worries. Anyone from the board, if you do, you're on mute. Okay. Then I will ask anyone from the public that would like to question this witness of this testimony, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine.
You know.
Do not see any, so. Mr. Singer, next witness.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Christopher. Right, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Christopher Nussar from Engineering and Land Planning.
Hi Chris, I'm just gonna swear you in, all right? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
It's Christopher Nussar, N-U-S-S-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nussar, can you please explain to the board your educational background?
Certainly. So I graduated from Rutgers University in 2006 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I have been a practicing civil engineer since I graduated. Been. I am currently a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. That license is in good standing. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. That license is also in good standing. I have testified before over 60 boards throughout the state, including, I believe, this board. Previously.
I think you also addressed what licenses you hold. At this time, I would like to ask the board to accept Christopher Nussar as an expert in engineering and planning.
I was on mute. Any objections? Okay, seeing none, we accept. You may proceed.
Thank you. We've heard testimony from the applicant as well as the architect. So they talked about the variances requested for the project and why each variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance. And I'd like at this time, if we could put up the site plan.
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I, why don't I put it up?
Yeah, Mr. Nussar, let me give you the option to do that. So go ahead. You can share so you can run through it yourself.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. So you should have the ability now to share your screen so you can.
I'm.
If you need anything, let me know.
I'm good. Thank you. So yeah, so let me, let me walk you all through the site just to get you acquainted with it before we get into the variances. If I cough, I apologize. Fighting off the back end of a sinus infection or a cold or something that got dragged on me. So again, a little scratchy and might have a couple of coughs on you, so. Ensconced in my basement.
No worries, but before we proceed, so do we want to label this A1?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is the submitted plan set last revised. February 26th of this year. Is revision one. So the subject property is a 7,500 square foot lot in your I1 zone. We have here on the screen, this is page three of seven, the existing conditions and site plan. So on the left here, we have the existing conditions plan. On the right, you have the proposed site plan. It's a little zoomed out. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit and try not make anybody nauseous as I do that. So the property is bounded to the east and west by other developed industrial properties. To the west is the ED zone. To the south, we have a vacant restaurant, which is located in the. I didn't write that down. I apologize. It's in highway service zone. And to the north, we have a residential property, which is also located in the I1 zone. The lot was a vacant wooded lot that was previously cleared by the applicant. There's no regulated environmental features on this site and the properly, property is generally flat. The proposal before you, as you can see here on the right, is a 1,200 square foot building proposed, as you heard, to be primarily used as storage with a small office area in it. A total of four parking spaces are proposed. Now, we've already walked through that. This complies with the parking ordinance, which requires 3.9 spaces for this building. Behind the building, what we have labeled as loading dock is really the loading area. That area is 18 by 25 behind the building to the rear here. The, I know your ordinance requirement is to have a 60-foot deep loading area. Commensurate with what the type of delivery vehicles and and the traffic that's going to be using the site is 60-foot deep loading area is is not necessary here. There's no tractor trailers coming in. That would be needed. That this site would need to support. Again, as we just heard, box trucks, vans, mason dump would really be the largest vehicles that are accessing the site. And this area is more than sufficient for their use. Again, we have no outdoor storage proposed. A fence was previously erected around the site. Right along the property lines, it's labeled here as wood fence. Coming around the property. That fence is proposed to remain to provide both screening and security to the site. The site has access off of Park Avenue. With two parking spaces, including the accessible stall in the front with the further two in the rear. With an 18-foot wide paved access drive along the side of the building. No curbing is proposed. In an effort to allow, as we'll get into in a second, the the stormwater to flow from the site without being impeded by the by the curbing. And. As I had said previously, the site. The site was previously wooded. The applicant did. Did remove up to eight trees from the site. Number isn't quite clear, might be seven, only seven trees, but on the safe side would have been no more than eight trees that would have been removed, that would have fallen under the township's tree ordinance. As part of the plan, which I'm going to jump two pages down here to the landscape plan. We're proposing to leave one of the trees that the applicant had placed along the southern property line, which is a red maple. And either relocate or replant an additional five trees. Per your ordinance, those eight removed trees would have required 24 replacement trees. I think we can, as we show, we're proposing six trees on the property. And the remaining, we would propose to compensate per the ordinance with a contribution. Excuse me, I'm gonna hop back to grading here. So I'm on sheet four, the grading plan, grading and solar erosion. On the left side of this page. The grading for this site, right now, again, the site is is very flat. The proposed conditions in the site would have a great break, basically in the middle of the building. Where behind that point, the water runs to the rear into this existing drainage ditch as it runs today. And forward of that towards the road, it would run out towards Park Avenue as it does now. There's a minimal increase in runoff as a result of the proposed development. This is a minor project, does not require stormwater management. As our. As our. Forget what we exactly titled it. We did a stormwater review for the runoff for this site. And had provided that to the board as part of the application package. And as you can see in that document, there's a very minor increase in stormwater runoff as a result. I believe it's less than 1/100 of a CFS of additional flow. Jump back here to sheet five. On the landscape and lighting, and let's talk about lighting briefly here. So the lighting for the site is proposed as three building-mounted fixtures mounted at 15 feet high. To provide adequate lighting for the site. There's gonna be, or as proposed, there's some minor spillover, which is really a result of the the size of this lot. Again, this lot is only 50 by 150 feet. It's hard to fully contain it. Again, we have a fence running around the entire perimeter of the property that helps mitigate any light spillover. And additionally, the lights can be shut off realistically at the close of business. And as you heard earlier, they're they're not generally operating when it's dark out. They're they're wrapping up prior to prior to the the sun going down, so the likelihood of lights realistically being on and spilling over is pretty low. We would provide shields on those lights, however. Based, and we can affix them in the field to to adjust them. To ensure that there's no glare specifically going to that residential property to the north. So that's, that's the site for you. So I'm gonna stop sharing here. And let's, let's discuss the variances on this lot. So first, I think it's probably best to list out specifically what the relief is that we are seeking.
Mr. Nussar, this is, before you go on, I mean, there were a few issues that came up from the Environmental Commission, but you talked about the the tree mitigation, so you might as well talk about it before you move on.
Sure.
So. And this really is directed also to Eric and to Dave, but it's the old question. You know, if a tree falls in the forest and no one's around to hear it, does it make a sound? So the question really is because the lot was cleared, there's no way of knowing how many trees were removed from the site. I don't know if the tree mitigation is sufficient or insufficient relative to the tree ordinance. So you know, we wanted to just make both of you aware and defer to you in terms of a guide how to, how to handle that type of situation in terms of tree mitigation.
I think from our end, we conferred with our clients who stated that they removed seven to about seven trees. We rounded that up to eight. To be on the safer side from the site. So we based it based upon their knowledge of the site conditions before the trees came down.
I don't, I don't think I have an issue with that, but I think it's more of a legal and a planning matter, because it just, I you know, people come in and they say they did this or did that, and I don't know. We didn't know how to handle it on the Environmental Commission, so that's why we're deferring it to legal or planning. So I just wanted to point that out.
To some extent, it's 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 up to the board how much they want to accept that testimony that only eight trees were removed. And that based on the caliper and the replacement values in the ordinance that they would be required to replace 24 trees. Planting some and putting up money for the rest. There's really no way. If we look at the aerial maps and it's fully wooded. But it's kind of up to the board, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, to to weigh what's being provided as testimony.
I would concur. If the board will give me a moment, I'm gonna try using my phone to pull up the tree mitigation.
At a minimum, they need a variance for removing more than 60% of the trees. So I mean, that's just for starters, regardless of, obviously, they took all the trees down, however many there were, so they need a variance for that.
Data variance after the fact?
Obviously, they took all the trees down. That's more than 60%. So that's the variance regardless of what they're putting back in. You can't, not supposed to be remove more than 60% of the trees.
Yeah.
So that that's a standing variance, nothing they can do about that.
But I guess my my clarification is we're granting a variance, but they've already been removed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Why don't we come back to the.
Mr. Nussar, how many trees were you going to plant on the site? I missed that.
We had six proposed to be planted on the site.
Six.
When were the trees removed?
Recent.
Prior to the application.
How prior?
That's a question for. Mattis.
Why don't we ask them? They still, remind them they're still under oath. I asked him the question. Give us one moment to China. Think of when exactly it was done. Okay, Matush is gonna answer.
It was, it was like March after last year.
Did everybody hear that? In March or April of 2020? In the middle of the pandemic, that's good. In the height of the pandemic, we went out tree cutting.
It's outside.
So we, nobody was allowed outside during that period.
Do you want to circle back to that?
No, I want, I want, I want to read a piece of the tree mitigation ordinance and let you all ponder on this one. This is section 188-166 of the Township Code. Violations of the provisions of this article shall be considered a Class C violation for each tree illegally removed. And for each day, the offense continues without mitigation. An application to the planning board or Board of Adjustment, as the case may be. A mitigation plan is required to be submitted for corrective action or any violation of this requirement of this article occurs. The trees were removed without an application pending. And it appears to be more than 60% of all trees on a non-residential lot. So the question is, do we have a violation of the Township Code separate and apart from mitigation? I will leave that to greater minds than I.
And what, Eric, what is the, if there is a violation, what is, what is the statute saying?
You know, it's always gotta be one in every crowd.
Well, you know, because I'm sure the firing minds want to know.
Give me a moment.
If it may help, I know that we had the, Mr. Gorman from the town had reached out to our clients back in 2020. And explained. and explained what needed to be done. Once Mr. Gorman had explained that they needed to go before the board. That is when they contacted our office and and professionals and and the application was drawn up and submitted.
Yeah, well, the problem, David, is that while that's all well and good, it's a tree issue needed really to be addressed before they even got to us in the first place. Whenever in the code of the township of Hillsborough, there is a reference to a class A, class, class A, B, or C violation, the penalty for that violation shall be assessed as per section one dash one fifteen of this article. Which states unless a specific penalty is provided elsewhere in the code of the township Hillsborough, any person, firm, or corporation who shall violate this code shall upon conviction thereof, i.e. municipal court violation, be punishable by one or more of the following, a fine not to exceed two thousand dollars or imprisonment for not more than sixty ninety days at the discretion of municipal court. This obviously is a potential violation of the township code, which would then require some action be taken on behalf of the township regarding same separate and apart and outside the jurisdiction of this board.
Again, there was no violation issued by township who knew.
Right.
Well, it is a conversation I will have with Mr. Maskey and Mr. Ferrara, separate and apart from all of this. And see where their thoughts are, etc. I mean, I know it shouldn't hold up the application per se, but frankly, David, the problem with this kind of situation, and this is not the first time we've seen it, is that people in their desire to get the property as clean as possible before anybody can take a crack at it, decide they're gonna take the trees down. That was one of the rationales for the tree mitigation ordinance in the first place was to prevent what is euphemistically known as clear cutting. So that there were still something resembling wood on a property before somebody came in and decided they were going to build. So that the board, whether it's this board or the zoning board, could then review a plan that says, oh, there are eight trees on the property you want to build here. You're going to need to take six down. We want you to replace as many as possible and contribute not, oh, by the way, we've clear cutted the property. There isn't anything left there, but we'll plant six trees just in case, and we'll throw in a couple of more bucks to make the deal. This may be the end of it, but obviously I'll have a conversation with the township officials and they'll let me know what they want to do. But it won't be it won't be coming from me necessarily, though we are the alternate prosecutor, so I can guarantee that we won't end up with it. So that's the roundabout answer, Neil. Be careful what you wish for.
Well, I mean, it was obviously something that came up at the environmental commission and we thought it would kind of transpire the way it did, meaning that, you know, we're an advisory board and it's a legal issue. So I think it needs to be routed the way that that you said.
And this board is a quasi judicial board and doesn't have the authority to render sick charges either. So we'll just we'll just kick it down the road a little further here in the building. I mean, so to speak, and we'll let the powers that be deal with it.
I think that's the way to handle it.
Otherwise, Mr. Singer, his client can move their application on. We'll deal with it accordingly.
Thank you. You know, one of the goals here is to to bring the the site into compliance and and make sure everything is done on the up and
Always nice that we could avoid the first part. The bringing in the bringing into part is always nice to avoid.
Understandable. Mr. Nussar, do you want, let's talk about, let's go back to the first variance.
Mr. Singer, could I just, I'm sorry, I just seen as Mr. Julian booked up the environmental commission memo. Either now or later, the environmental commission suggested they apply to DRCC to DEP. And the applicant has requested a waiver from those requirements. So at some point, you'll need
We can address those now. Why don't we do that? And I think Chris will discuss the fact that the it is a minor
Are we just are we going? Are we just at this point going through the
Yeah, go through the environmental commission memo dated May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one.
Gotcha. So that I'm gonna go on that letter on the second set of bullet points of the EC's concerns. The first being that the applicant, you know, we should apply to the DRCC per prior to any approval of a resolution by this planning board. This this site is going to be exempt. It is not physically large enough of a property to trigger the DRCC regulations when it comes to being a major project. There's no way we can add a quarter acre of land to a lot that is only seven hundred and sorry, seven thousand five hundred square feet in area. So this will be an exempt application. We will make the application for them to deem us exempt. But I see no reason why the action of this board should be delayed pending an outside agency application. We had on the second bullet point, we had submitted in a letter regarding wetlands on the site and that there are none on this property and there are no transition areas. To the rear of the site, there is a manmade drainage ditch that was constructed to convey stormwater down towards two oh six. That would be an ordinary wetland with no buffer. It's not located onsite. So far as this board requires us to get an LOI from the DEP. We can make that application. However, there is no requirement by the DEP that we do so. The third item we've already discussed, that was the trees. The fourth item regards that drainage ditch to the rear. It is not a regulated water. It does not drain fifty acres. It is on no maps as a regulated water and is a manmade feature that is simply there to convey stormwater from the adjacent property and to convey it again towards the highway. It's not some it's a stream. It's not anything other than a drainage conveyance feature. Again, on the the fifth bullet point, it's opining whether or not the drainage ditch would be a stream under the township ordinance. The section one eighty eight sixty four is called natural features. And I would submit that it it's not a stream. Again, this is this is something that was constructed as part of the site development activities on this adjacent property to convey stormwater. It's not a stream. It's simply there to move stormwater around and to not use pipes for all of it. On the final item on how the building is heated, I'm not sure the pertinence of it. And I I cannot answer that question if the board does in fact want to know how the building's heated.
So just for clarification, then you you will submit a a letter to DRCC. And you're gonna go, you're you are going to obtain a LOI from NJDEP. As far as the the drainage ditch, I don't know. I mean, I do you have any thoughts on that, David?
No, I don't. I was gonna ask Drew, do you have any comments?
Not really. I mean, that drainage ditch, I think, is a manmade feature. It seems like it is. And I doubt it has the the drainage area tributary to it to qualify as a regulated, any kind of regulated stream where, you know, has fifty acres or more of drainage area. So I don't I don't really see any kind of, and that's off the applicant's site. So I really don't see any kind of impact it having on the site.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's something that I'm not quite sure how you prove it or don't prove it. So I guess part of the testimony is part of that verification. I I mean, with the LOI, there there was wetlands, you know, near near the property. So it's it's hard to know, be again, because the the trees are cut down and we just didn't know. So you know, we appreciate you you going and getting that LOI. So and the same thing with the DRCC. If they say that it's exempt, then that's something that we can have on file as in terms of the township. So we do appreciate, you know, both of those gestures as well, but I don't really know in terms of the drainage ditch. I'll have to just refer to, you know, Dave Maskey on that. And if he doesn't feel that there's anything else needed, then we could just go with the the testimony provided. And I think that would suffice then at that point. I haven't walked the property. I don't know if anybody else did, but it's hard to say.
Again, I, you know, the section that regulates this is in is a section on natural features.
Right.
And about preserving them to just from a practical standpoint, if somebody were to install a a drainage swell to move stormwater around on their property and then for the ordinance to then apply a hundred and fifty foot buffer. If you don't like your neighbor, you can go dig a drainage ditch. And now suddenly he's got a problem where you just put a hundred and fifty foot buffer on his property on him. I mean, it's, you know, it's a manmade feature built to convey stormwater. I I don't see how it even if for some reason it were to be regulated by the ordinance by by some technicality, how it would advance any of the the purposes of that specific ordinance to preserve natural features.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we got the application last Monday, so it's a a week turnaround. Sometimes we walk the site just to verify, you know, what the applicant states. We didn't have the opportunity to do that in this point. So we're basically going on on your testimony that, you know, it is it is a manmade feature. So that, you know, that's where we're coming from. And it is.
And the town engineer, I believe, it's just I you had also, you'd also said that you believe it's manmade.
I I believe so, just by the way, how it how it's linear and the and the the cross section of it. Yeah.
I mean, it's very regular in its cross section. It is paralleling the property line pretty directly. You know, it it has a discharge relatively recently constructed discharge into the side of it that continues through. There's that rip rap located just just south of of the subject property into that ditch. So, yeah, I I again, every every characteristic of it is that of one that was constructed.
Okay.
So I'm I'd like to just use Mr. Maskey's letter to outline what the variances are before we move forward into the proper testimony on it.
Mr. Maskey's letter, you're discussing the May twenty first, two thousand twenty one letter, correct?
Correct. So starting on page two, again, the proposed use is approved in zone. On item number four, when we get into the area yard and general bulk standards, this is where most of the variances are. And that's because this lot is undersized in its existing condition. The area requirement is one acre. We're at seven hundred, sorry, seven thousand five hundred square feet. So we are undersized. The lot width requirement is two hundred feet. And we have a fifty foot width lot. The lot depth requirement is two hundred feet. This lot's only a hundred and fifty feet deep. So those are all existing nonconformities that this property has. The the project as proposed results in some additional variances, namely the front yard where the requirement's fifty feet. We are proposing thirty seven. The side yards, which are each twenty five feet. We're proposing twenty one feet from the north towards the residential property and five feet to the south towards the restaurant. Again, at twenty five feet each on a fifty foot wide lot, it leaves you with zero room to build a building. Additionally, the maximum impervious coverage requirement of sixty percent being exceeded. We're at sixty three point five seven percent. It's actually a fairly nominal amount of actual square footage over the the allowable. However, again, it is it is over. And then a minimum buffer requirement from the residential property, not zone, but residential property located to the north, where twenty feet's required. And we're proposing three. Additionally, there's some other waivers and variances located in here in section five. There's a you know what, let me let me change my tact here midstream and give you testimony on this because I think it's probably going to be a little bit cleaner. When it comes to these the variances that I just outlined, the lot area, the lot width, the lot depth, the front yard, the side yards, the impervious coverage and that buffer from the residence to the north. They're all really summed up, as I said earlier, on the existing size of this lot. This is a a clear hardship on the property. A lot is the size that it is. Looking around to other properties to the north, that's a residential property. That property is also undersized. It also has you know, it does not have enough frontage to provide us additional width to make us more conforming. So we can't go and take land from from that residential property to the west and to the south. Those properties are in different zones. And so we can't go and take lands from from those properties which are developed and developed, as we've just spoken about, basically to the edge of this property. So without a reasonable opportunity on the ability to increase the size of this lot, we have a hardship in the fact that this lot is seventy five hundred square feet in a one acre zone. And that kind of keeps moving through as you look at the width and you look at the depth. You know, again, the side yards, if you combine both side yards, you end up with no space. The intention here was to provide as much offset as we could from the residential property by giving twenty one feet on that side. And then the five feet on the the south side towards the restaurant. The maximum impervious coverage, again, we're at we're at sixty three point fifty seven. And that three point five seven percent is two hundred and sixty seven square feet of impervious coverage. I think if you look at the layout of the site, it's it's efficient in its layout. There's not extraneous asphalt anywhere. You know, the this is a twelve hundred square foot building. And so, you know, the impervious coverage, quite frankly, the fact that it's only less than four percent over is I I think I don't want to say commendable, but it almost comes across as commendable to me. And then again, lastly, you have this minimum buffer from the residential property to the north where that twenty feet is required. And we only have the three feet. We have the fence in this location. That fence is going to remain, which provides that buffer. I think if you you take a look at what these standards are geared towards. And as we go through some of these other waivers, this is geared towards This is geared towards a larger industrial development than what this is. This is a use that's actually. For this property. It's, it's really well suited to this property because it's a very limited intensity use. You have a 1,200 square foot building where somebody's coming in the morning. They come back at the end of the job. And that's, that's really it. You have limited traffic. You don't have trucks coming in and out, making deliveries. You don't have people coming in and out. You don't have customers coming in and out. So you have a small lot. It's undersized. Yes. But you have a very low intensity use. That's going into this space. It's, it. Quite frankly, I think commensurate with the size of the lot is, is what this development is and. I think at the end of the day, these, the. Minor increase in impervious coverage. But the lot. Is, is well suited to handle that extra 267 square feet. It's, it's a very small amount. The way the site's been designed and laid out. You know, while there is this hardship on, on the development and being able to meet these standards. It's done in a way that's. You know. That's respecting the residential property. Adjacent to it, to, to the best ability practicable. As we, we move through on the other items that are in here.
Mr. Nasser, can I just ask one question? You go on because it relates to the, the. There's presently a fairly sizable hoop house, Quonset hut on the property. Is that going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank.
So just again, moving through your letter, Mr. Maskey. In section five. We have two waivers. That are being, I'm sorry, three waivers that are being sought. The first is for. The aisle with the driveway. The ordinance requires a 30 foot width. We're providing 18 feet. 18 feet is. For the type of traffic that's using this. I mean, 18 feet is typical for, not typical, but is allowable, I would say, as a, as a public road. So it's more than sufficient to pass the type of vehicles. Again, if this was a larger industrial facility with. Tractor trailers coming in and out and using the site, a 30 foot width would be. I think would be an appropriate standard to have, but given the fact that we have. Smaller vehicles, you know, box trucks, vans. That type of thing using the site 18 feet sufficient. Again. Given the constrained width of the lot, we only have 50 feet. If 30 feet of it is. A driveway as well, then you're really limiting the ability to develop the lot. Excuse me. The second is the loading space. Again, requiring it to measure 60 feet long. We're proposing 24 feet. I discussed this earlier, but again, the type of vehicles using the site doesn't require a 60 foot loading area. And then finally, in this section is. That the. Parking is prohibited in the front yard where we have two spaces in the front yard. And. That the driveway inside yard. Parking can occupy no more than 30% of the lot frontage and the driveway itself is 36% of the street frontage. So. Realistically on this site. For us to provide the parking in the rear of the site entirely. Pulls the building forward on the site, right? So we're, we're balancing. What this, what this lot is and. Putting parking in front utilizes that area and keeps the building from having to be pushed back further into the site. So that, you know. Or. The building further forward on the site. So then you'd be exacerbating that front yard setback. The, the driveway occupying more than 36 or being 36% of the street frontage. Again, 18, 18 feet is a. Is a comfortable number. For this. You know, to, to meet that standard, we'd be exacerbating the other standard of the 30 foot requirement. And really it's just a function of the limited width of the lot where, you know, normally you have. You know, your requirements for a 200 foot wide lot and this is only a 50 foot wide lot. Item six, and it's a waiver for curbs to be provided along. The, what actually clarification, Mr. Maskey. When it says curb shall be provided along the full width of the property, is that along the street frontage or is that within the site itself?
Street frontage.
Okay, that is a comment in Mr. DeSessa's letter that the street that we provide. 15 foot wide half width of pavement that's curbed. And we, we can agree to that. The providing that so that waiver would, would go away. And we would meet that requirement. The sections on the signs, I believe Mr. Fortunato had given testimony earlier that we would revise the signs to comply. So that we did not need any relief related to them. The tree mitigation. We, we return to that. We do require a variance for removing more than 60% of the original trees. I'm, I'm not going to say, well, it's, it's too late. The trees are gone. I don't think that's a fair testimony to give you. I would say as my testimony, even if this was a fully wooded lot and it remained, you know, it was still a fully wooded lot. You know, it is a. Undersized lot. Again, we have this hardship here that continues through that this lot is only 7,500 square feet. In order to facilitate development of this property. You know, 60% of the lot. You're, you know, you can only develop 4,500 square feet of that property if it's fully wooded. It's not really reasonable to be able to. To develop the entire property. Does that require removal of 100% of the trees? No, wouldn't have required removal of 100% of the trees. But. As the past is the past on that particular function of it. You know. As, as your attorney has said, the township has their enforcement actions which they will take in, in the way that they see fit. But as far as the variance is concerned, I think it is appropriate to grant the variance for removing more than 60% of the original trees. Just because this lot again is. Was fully wooded, number one, and number two is undersized. And it's not. It's not reasonable to expect the development on the property and it can form. Use without, without exceeding that. For item 10 on refuse collection. Again, because they're, they're generating trash on sites. When they're going for the day, they're coming and grabbing tools and leaving. There's not really trash. That is accumulated in any. Sufficient amount that would require the need for a trash enclosure. So far as any trash is generated, it would be held inside within the garage. And then would be disposed of accordingly, but trash enclosure is only going to increase the amount of impervious coverage on the site. And for the proposed use, it, it's not. Not really necessary. So we would request that waiver. I believe Mr. Fortunato had gone through the various. Sections of the architectural site design overlay district. And I don't believe we had. Any waivers as a result of that. And then of course, the applications subject to your affordable housing fee. So again, on balance. To sum it up. The, the use that's proposed forms to your. To your zoning ordinance. And is a very low intensity impact use. We have very limited traffic. We have very limited daytime activities on the site. Materials all kept inside. The proposed building is from an architectural standpoint. Probably more in line with a residential building than it is with an industrial one. And I think it actually provides a nice transition as you go down the street to the residential properties. It's got a gable roof on it. And, and fits well with, again, with that transition. The, you know, the issues that we have related to. Any problems with stormwater, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. I think we've addressed all of the concerns here. With this lot so that there's no substantial impacts to any of the. Any of the surrounding properties, certainly not to the residential property to the north.
Thank you, Chris. Let's move to the engineering memo. From the No Need. Dated May 27th, 2021.
Yes. So Mr. DeSessa's memo. Starting on page two towards the bottom under the heading site plan. Item one will certainly provide item two. Item two, Mr. DeSessa, you had spoken to Mr. Ingram from my office earlier today regarding this item, correct? So.
Yes.
The. It's, it's a. As, as we went back through the title work on this to, to look into this item. We had to go back several deeds because everybody has been transposing the same. The same deed as they, as they transfer property and leaving out one very specific item. So when this lot was created by subdivision back in the seventies. The deed was written that this was subject to a five foot wide dedication to the township for road widening purposes. It wasn't a right of way dedication specifically, but it is an easement to the township for road widening dedication. So we will. Amend the plan to provide that, to show that five foot easement. That's on that original deed. That was kind of dropped through the years, didn't come through with the title work and. To, to correct that, which makes it, excuse me. Which again, I understand it's not consistent with what the township's tax map is, but that's what. That's how the deed reads. For the property.
Right. So the, the, there is a five foot roadway easement that you'll show on your site plan and update the survey basically.
Yes.
To indicate that, which effectively gives the 25 foot half width of the road. Or 50 foot full width. Which is consistent with what our tax maps indicate. So I think that's a reasonable fix for that, for that right away there.
Thank you. Item three, we will correct. Item four. Is kind of informational. Item five. Regarding stormwater. Again, we're not proposing any. Stormwater improvements. Because this is a minor project and the. The change in flows is. Very de minimis. Again, the portions that flow off the rear of the property go immediately into. That drainage ditch behind the property and would not negatively impact any, any of the property owners in that direction. To the front, it's going to run out towards the public right of way and get collected from there. Understanding per your comment here that if we recalculated this based on a wooded condition. That would. Show a slightly larger increase. It's still going to be a fairly, I mean, the, the amount of runoff in general is very low. So the, the increase is going to commensurately be very low. So, you know, the, the sites again already fairly constrained. So providing a stormwater management system on here. Would be. Would be somewhat constraining. And I don't know that there's any really realized benefit. To. The adjacent properties as a result.
Well, the reason for the comment was, you know, your narrative basically assumed the existing conditions were gravel, but. Reality, this was a wooded lot. And so going from practically no impervious to 60%. Plus is, is an increase in.
Right.
Well, I agree. It's, it's small, but. You know, for the, for the hundred year storm, it could be a little bit more. I don't think. Looking for any large stormwater management system, you know, a simple. A simple dry well with an overflow pipe, something to attenuate. Because you are going to increase. The flow over, over a naturally wooded lot to, to all this impervious. And you do have places to connect with the storm drainage system across the street. So there is a place to, to manage it. So. I would recommend you look at something small, something to address the runoff because of the. The new conditions there. But I leave that to the. I'll leave that up to the board whether they. You know, feel they want to. Have that.
I mean, the board feels that. That there's a benefit to doing that, then we can, we can provide that. Again, I think. Even. Even the amount of flow, if there was no flow to what is proposed is a very minor difference. It's not an extensive amount of water, but so far as the, the board feels it's required, we would comply. Excuse me. Item six. We had said we would comply with that. That's widening out the half width of the road. And providing curbing there. Item seven. Is the waiver for the drive aisle with. Which we already discussed. Item eight, we discussed as well, which was the. How we identified as a loading dock to the rear of the building. It's really just the loading area. Outside the garage door in the back of the building. Item nine, number nine, turning templates for the delivery trucks. Providing access to the loading area should be provided to make sure that there's adequate circulation and maneuverability. We can certainly do that and. Show that, you know, we can get the vehicles in and out that we're saying we can get in and out. I think number. Number 10 was addressed by the applicant in his testimony. Item number 11. Is the grading and soil protection. This, the site already has certification from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. And obviously would comply with. With those requirements as, as it relates to. Top soil protection. Making sure that compaction is, is limited and, and the grass can grow and, and all those standards that are required. I don't know if there's anything specific otherwise in there. Mr. DeSessa, that you wanted us to discuss.
No, just that you'll comply with that ordinance. That ordinance has other core requirements that aren't part of the solar ocean approval typically like. Topsoil remaining in the township and just. You know, tho- those type of things. So I think a reference to the, the requirements on the plans would be enough. For compliance.
Certainly. Items 12 through 14 are just some plan amendments which we will address. Item 15 is the trash enclosure. We discussed that. Item 16 is additional detail on the lights that are proposed and we can certainly provide cut sheets or add them to the cut sheets to the plan. Excuse me. Tried to talk too quickly. Item 17. I'm, I'm going to share my screen again here. Just to discuss this. Oh, no, it was on the right sheet. Item 17 is a request for an additional street tree. Along Park Avenue. We have one proposed. I mean, realistically, you know, the driveway being 18 feet and separated. Off. Three feet here, you know, we have less than 30 feet. To fit a tree. We have our utilities coming through, so they're even with the building. The sanitary line ends in this location, so it kind of needs to come through. On this end of the site. You know, it's a. From a long-term viability of, of two trees, I, I don't think it's there. I, I don't think we have. From a long term viability of of two trees, I I don't think it's there. I I don't think we have enough separation. For the the crown and canopies and avoiding the utilities. You know, plus putting that, you know, if we we had located it further to the south here along the road. In order to keep that tree uh away from any sight lines of people exiting the driveways to make sure there's, you know, clear sight distance coming through. Uh, so I. It's just, it's a tight little area and it's hard to put another tree in, and we would request. Um, that we not be required to do that. Um, if if the board. Uh, we're so inclined, we could add an additional tree. In this rear area here. Bringing the total up on site to to seven trees. Uh, adding a tree kind of behind the loading area. If it was desired, but the additional tree um along the the street, it it's it's a bit of a tight fit.
Are we marking that exhibit?
That was A one again.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry for not identifying it first.
No problem.
Uh, and then item, the two miscellaneous items, um, you know, any cost estimate for. Improvements and uh all requisite approval and well serve letters, uh, we can certainly provide.
Are there any um questions for um this witness? Further questions?
I have one uh more of a clarification, I believe uh was testified earlier that you will be requesting paper for the lighting. Is that correct? It's gonna overflow?
Yes.
Okay.
I have just one question maybe that the app can answer better and it regards to to the trash. Obviously, the trucks are construction trucks. They'll come back. Need to be unloaded. They'll have debris possibly in the trucks that have to be cleaned, and so do they plan on. Taking the trash to another facility to empty out, or how how they in just construction in general. There's trash that's that's generated, whether they come back with it or leave at the yard. You know, are they gonna have a a big trash can inside the building and then they have to empty that somewhere? Yeah, I don't.
Um, I guess the the question then to the applicant is, is would you have regular garbage service for the building?
Right, so in in that case, you'd have to have cans and then a dumpster, which then to Mr. Maskey's point would have to be enclosed. And and or if it's outside in the facility.
Well, I mean, um. I, you know. For many years, I've kept my trash can inside my garage. To keep things from going after it. Um, you know, you have the garage here. You're not putting any. Uh, you know, it's not like there's kitchen waste where there's a lot of, you know, degradable food things in there um that would that you'd be putting in. Uh, so keeping keeping that within the building and just a a trash can, because again, the amount of trash that's going to be generated is not substantial enough that you'd be. Warranting a dumpster. Uh, you're not there all day. Um, I do understand that, yeah, if you come back and, you know, you're. You got some stuff in the truck you need to throw out, maybe you throw it out, but I guess Mike. I'm asking a question a bit to the applicant as well is um the same thing, would would they have. Regular trash service coming to the to the property to pick up and or would they be bringing it somewhere else?
Ralph, can you ask that to client?
Uh, yeah, you mean one moment. What Matush was saying is uh basically, let's say ninety percent is taken to job sites because it's part. Of their jobs, they're they usually have dumpsters there or big containers. Um, and then anything left over, they also have um it's basically like decals for removal with the NJDP. Um, that they could utilize that as well. For the additional basically garbage that would be generated in like a small little. Uh, little dumpster that would be inside, yeah.
Dumpster or trash can?
Or trash can, not really a dumpster, yeah, sorry about that.
No, I would make sure it's clear.
Yes, all trash, not a dumpster, no.
Oh, that, so. Are they planning on then taking that trash to the recycling center, or are they gonna have a regular. Schedule pickup like they bring out to the to the curb and the truck comes and picks it up like you would at your house?
Yeah, their their what their planning is actually taking it to the to the recycling center.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna ask, uh, our professionals, were all your concerns satisfactorily answered?
Yes, I have no more comments at the moment.
Okay, true.
Yes, no, no more comments right now.
Okay, if there's no further questions from the board, I'm gonna open it up to the public. So if anyone in the public has any questions of this witness's testimony, please raise your hand. Or your virtual hand or press star nine.
Still seen on Carl.
Nope, and I'm gonna see, uh, Michael, do you need a break? Because I see it's about ten after nine.
Um, yeah, sure. If you think we're gonna be going for a little bit longer, I'd take five minutes.
Okay, so it's. All right, so we'll reconvene about nine fifteen.
Thank you.
Everybody could just meet yourselves and turn your video off. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Like everyone's starting to pop back. Uh, so let's get started again. Michael, you want to do a real call and make sure everyone's back?
Sure, um, Mr. Emick.
Sure.
Mr. Chigarelli.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Pizan. We'll come back to him, Mr. Scobo.
Yeah.
Mr. Hashtag.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Delkor.
Here.
Mayor Lepani.
Here.
I share Julian.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Kinsler.
Yep.
Mr. Maskey.
Here.
Mr. De Sessa.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
And Mr. Pizan.
Must be that walking the dog.
I see, well, I see him. Square on, but he's on mute, so. Maybe.
Yeah, I've requested him on you a couple of times, so.
He may be. Otherwise.
Okay. So I guess we'll continue. Singer.
Sure, um. I think we were um, we're done with our witnesses. Um, I think we. Think I guess, uh, chairman, if you wanted to, if the public had any questions for this witness. Or any board members.
Yeah, I think I had opened it up. I'll do it again. Any board members during your break, think of any questions?
I see none.
No, anyone from the public?
Yeah.
Back.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, I just, I was wondering, I think the issue with the treatment mitigation, do we have to? Kind of resolve that, and I'm just wondering, like, if there's a condition that. The issue with the township is resolved, like as far as the order ordinance from last year. You know, if that's resolved. Uh. And we're comfortable with a certain amount of trees, because something like. You know, based on eight trees, whatever the mitigation costs or allowance would be for that, or the cost rather. Could we propose that they meet, let's say, a hundred and fifty percent of that? Just to provide level of comfort, since we don't really know how many trees were taken down. I'm not sure, I'm just throwing that out there.
So Eric, is there is there allowance to create, I mean, obviously, there's a ratio, and David knows of of based on caliber inch of the tree. And since we don't know that, we know there was eight trees, but we don't know if they're twelve inch caliber, sixteen inch caliber, twenty four inch caliber. As to what the. You know, the number of trees that would be replaced. I mean, looking at the. The pictures, there were some large canopy trees there that would be, you know, larger than I say three inch caliber tree. And it's a relatively was a wooded lot, so. Uh, if, what would the ratio of trees replaced based on? They say they were seven, as as the testimony would be, seven larger trees. I guess that's what. We'd like to know.
You'll give me a moment, we'll try again.
I don't know if David has that ratio of what the. Replacement would be. Under the ordinance.
Okay, here we go.
Quick section, David.
Uh, one eighty eight, one sixty four A, so for for a six to twelve inch caliber tree removed. You have to replace it with two two trees, thirteen to twenty fourth, four trees replacement, twenty five plus inch caliber, six trees per. Replacement.
How many trees have we calculated?
So our our calculation was based on an equal number of six to twelve and thirteen to twenty four inch trees. So um, four, four of each. Which is what get us to the. The um twenty four number.
Is the, now, this is separate apart from whatever the township may or may not do, Mr. Singer, is is your client willing to can to accept that all of the trees were thirteen to twenty four?
Um. Ralph, can you, uh? I believe.
Before you, before you ask him the question. That would produce thirty two replacement trees, is that correct, Mr. Maskey, if my math is correct?
I'll trust your man.
And you're proposing six on site, which means your client would have to pay for twenty six, twenty six trees.
At three hundred and twenty five dollars a tree.
So that's about. Between eight and nine thousand.
Now be paid into the township's tree tree fund.
And I will point out, as I said a couple of minutes ago, that's separate apart from whatever the township intends to do. We have no control over that, nor can we bind them. Now, does the board have a problem with that proposal? Based on Mr. Hashtag's suggestion? Don't all speak at once.
I'm, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either.
Uh, just to clarify what we're proposing, so we're going to assume there were eight total trees taken down, all of which exceeded.
Thirteen inches.
We're in the thirteen to twenty four inch range, so it'd be.
Right.
Four trees, okay, four times, right?
Thirty-two.
Right.
And he's proposing to put six back, so that would mean twenty-six trees payment into the mitigation fund. It's more, a small price to pay for clear cutting.
Uh, trees at three hundred and fifty dollars a tree, is that true, David?
Three twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, and I had offered the to add a seventh tree to the rear of the site as well, so if we were to do that, it would just. Change the balance at twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-six at three twenty-five is eighty-four fifty, for the record.
So if you're talking about putting a seventh tree in, then it's twenty-five tree payment.
It's eighty-one twenty-five.
Eighty-one twenty-five. Payable win, David.
Sure, Ralph, could you, uh, unmute?
Yeah, I'm discussing that with them, they kind of overheard as well, or they're listening as well, um. Can can we have a moment? So I can stop them.
If you're going to, I would suggest, A, you talk to Mr. Singer, B, immune.
Yeah, okay.
Other than Ken's suggestion on the tree issues, anyone else have any issues they want to see resolved? Separate apart from what's been discussed here tonight?
See a lot of head shaking now.
Maybe, I'm sorry, just one more thing, so since there is a resident uh next to it. I assume like they got notice of it, and if they had any. Questions or concerns, they were answered, or they would have had to appear here.
Or they didn't have any issues, so.
Right. Okay.
Where, where did we, sorry, where where did we land on the? Stormwater. calculation. Uh, with respect to impervious coverage and the drainage. Um, I don't see any downspouts on the building. I I'm just starting to wonder, where is this runoff? And I I've thought of some previous testimony or previous hearings that we've had that talk about. How much the trees absorb. Water when it hits the ground, and now we're, and and somebody made the point that we're going from really zero. Coverage to now sixty percent, it's not that we're just getting a variance from sixty to sixty-three percent, it's zero to sixty percent, so. As a board, where did we stand on? On that matter, which I I don't know that we fully resolved it with, uh, I I know Drew. Mr. De Sessa kind of said it's up to the board to figure out what we want to do uh based on his suggestion.
Yeah, I know he recommended some small solution, I thought that was a good idea.
I believe, um, you said just a dry well and a connection to the storm sewer, is that correct?
Yeah, that's something that could be done, a a small uh subsurface uh chamber, dry well, and then an overflow pipe. Which would uh regulate the flows and it, there is a ability to connect. To the a storm sewer, existing storm sewer system on um. On the road in front, in front of the site.
So is that going to require some type of approval?
No, I mean.
Condition.
Yeah, that's just part of uh their site, their site planning and conditioning.
Right, but, but uh. But to actually make that connection. Do they need to? Uh, make an application or get approval to?
Uh, normally, it would be covered under the, under the site plan approval, uh. Once, once they're approved to begin site construction and um also under a street opening permit, so they could file with the engineering department. For that, because if they, if they have to trench across the road to connect to the storm system, yes.
Scobo, I have a question on the the trees. Being a lot. And most of those trees were being cleared anyway. Does that still? Stay in effect that how many trees you remove? And that they have to pay for, just a question out there, most of those trees would have had to come down for that small lot for that building to go up. Does that still calculate the same way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does, it's understood that a certain amount of trees would need to be cleared, but the ordinance regulates how many. Um, and how they need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Um, I spoke with the applicant and um, they're willing to uh. To do what you suggested in terms of the size of the trees. In terms of the payment into the the fund. Uh, based upon the side, the larger sized tree.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Singer. Did you hear the comment that was made while you were about tying in for stormwater into a dry well? And the buildings, based on the engineering's testimony?
Um, I did not, but I believe, uh, Mr. Nussler had already said we would do that if um, if the board suggested during his presentation.
Just want to make sure, we we were talking about that while you were in chambers.
I appreciate you, uh, letting me know what was discussed.
Okay.
Mr. Nussler, that's correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, just for underlining purposes, you will apply to both DRCC and DEP uh prior to. Compliance review. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And the lights would be off at close of business, correct?
Yeah, once somebody leaves, when they leave the site, they would turn the lights off.
Okay, finally, you're adding a tree in the back, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I have no further witnesses.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll just go out to the public. And since we're coming to the end, well, we're at the end of testimony. So any final questions to any of the applicant's witnesses? On any other testimony this evening? Raise your virtual hand or press star nine.
I see none, Carl.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to close to the public.
So move, bail upon him. For a second behind Rob Peason.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I, I.
Okay. Any final questions, thoughts? From the board? Okay, there, Mr. Bernstein. Next set of actions.
Exit of action, Mr. Chairman, is for the board to consider the approval of the application PB. Twenty PB fourteen MSPV with for preliminary and final major site plan approval. To see bulk variance and waivers sought to construct a twelve hundred square foot office warehouse with enhancements to the parking lot. Associated improvements along with the conditions accepted by the applicant related to the dry well. Connection. And the tree mitigation. As I will not be in the resolution, but I do want in the record one more time for Michael to put there. That any action the township takes relative to the clear cutting of the property is outside the jurisdiction of the board. And not covered by the agreement relative to the tree mitigation.
Scobo.
Now, Ryan, you cut off, sorry.
Ryan made the motion.
For two.
And who's second?
I'll second it.
Julia.
Any final comments, thoughts? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Really, yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor? You're on mute.
Frank, say again.
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Right, Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Have have a good evening and looking forward to in person. Uh, soon with all, with you all.
Thank you.
Coming soon.
The theater near you.
Yeah.
Everybody up.
We don't have any more applications this year, correct?
From me or uh from someone else?
In general.
I hope we have a few more.
Right.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Good night and best of luck.
No, don't go away yet.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Singer, break.
Uh, yeah, no, I know, I just want to make sure. Eric, we're going to adjourn first and then you're gonna. Speak to us.
Rebrief, yeah.
Okay. So we do have a meeting next week. Uh, on the tenth. It's gonna be. I'm assuming it's going to be our favorite action.
Yes.
There may be, there may be one or more resolutions for memorialization.
Okay. But regardless, it's going to be a, you know, relatively short meeting.
I don't believe there's any other applications on, correct, David?
That's correct, this is JSM slash cost cutter.
Yeah, they're gonna be uh not prepared again.
Correct.
They had more, well, they were prepared, but they found a mistake. And in all their drawings, so uh they're going to be. Asking for another extension.
It'll be something new and different from Mr. Wilson.
Now, just so a reminder, they will be probably asking for an adjournment to one of the July meetings, and those will be in person, live and in person in the courtroom. You know, if there's any restrictions. Related to that in terms of masking distancing, we'll let you know beforehand, but but it will be in the courtroom back on July first.
Bring your masks.
Yes.
And do we have anything at the, we don't have a business meeting?
You're doing twenty-fourth business meeting, no, we don't, but you could. Cancel it now or cancel it next week, I guess.
That's true.
You have anything on for July one?
Nope, July is empty at the moment, other than potentially JSM, we have, we have nothing on until. Depending on how the E, the EC meeting play out, possibly not until September. When the.
We may have another depend, uh, I will briefly mention that next.
Okay.
Okay. So with that being said, I'm going to entertain a motion of adjournment.
Scobo.
Wait your second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Okay, we are officially adjourned and.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Go, bye, Michael.
Yeah.
Get me, I need the transcript.
Hold on, hold on a second. We still have a. A member on.
And. Okay, and do you stop recording at this point?
Yeah, just give me one second.